Everybody please rise. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to work and live. Amen. Now the pledge. Pledge allegiance, supply, United States of America, and a true republic which stands one nation, under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. The clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Here.
Counselor Noom.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
That's nine present.
Thank you. Do we have a moment of silence?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
I'd like to offer a moment of silence for William H. Junior Salvi Woods, 51, of Lowell, Mass., formerly of Wilmington. Salvi passed away November 15th alongside with his family after a long illness. He was the beloved husband of Eileen McMahon Woods and devoted husband, excuse me, devoted father of Patrick Woods and Casey Woods of Lowell, Lowell High Graduates. He'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Doc in the chambers, please. Thank you. We now have accept the minutes of the zoning subcommittee of November 13th. City Council meeting of November 13th. I need a motion to accept and place in file by Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request the suspension of the rules to recognize Circle Health and deliver a proclamation.
Thank you. Yes, it's important month for Circle Health. We have a proclamation to, because this is National Home Care and Hospice Month, and we have a proclamation from the city, City of Lowell, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, by his honor William J. Samaras, a mayor proclamation. Whereas Circle Home is a nonprofit agency providing home care and hospice services to Lowell residents and families since its founding in the city in 1909. Home health service is the most efficient, effective, and patient-preferred style of healthcare, enabling many people to stay safely in their own homes even with the health and challenges. Whereas home health and hospice staff members bring treatment, teaching, reassurance, and health coaching delivered with expertise and compassion to people of all ages, backgrounds, and life circumstances into every Lowell neighborhood. Whereas November is National Home Care and Hospice Month, recognizes the important services that are available to individual families and communities through home health and hospice agencies across the country. Now therefore, I, William J. Samaras, mayor, do hereby proclaim November 2018 as Home Care and Hospice Month, and the city of Lowell encourage all residents to recognize the importance of this integral service given this 20th day of November 2018. Myself, William J. Samaras, mayor of City of Lowell. We have some people from Circle Health. Receive them. Now, do you want to please come to the...
Thank you. I'm Eileen. I'm representing Circle Home and just want to thank you and also to share with you that we value the opportunity to provide home care and hospice to our residents in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to come before, behind the rail and take a picture with the city council?
One, two, three.
What's the name of the organization? What's the name of the organization?
Next, we go into communication with the city manager. Motion responses. First is National Grid's citywide update. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you for the update. I read the report and I just didn't know, threw you to the manager. It seemed like the meeting went well, right, and everything? But it's funny that, I'm just trying to check my calendar, I think it was Friday or Saturday, I got a call again from people up on Parkview after you had the meeting saying that the subcontractors were up there again. They did, this time they weren't knocking on doors, but they were up there walking around and without anybody identifying them from National Grid, so...
Yeah, we did have the meeting, two meetings actually, last week, and in one of them, the National Grid representatives did say that they have been knocking on doors, doing this assessment where, you know, some of the homes that have the meters inside, they have to knock on the door. There's some 19,000 homes. They've gone through most of them, but there's still 1,000. There was specific requests made that if they're going to be going to a neighborhood, that they notify the police department. So, and if residents have someone who is knocking on their door, they should call if they have any concern and not let them in. And they're, so, but I think, you know, that's still an ongoing situation. So, that was one of the meetings, having to do with the presence in the neighborhoods. I think the complicating factor is that when they've done these knocking on doors, there are other representatives from other companies, for instance, that seem to be following them and going to knock on doors and have a conversation with the residents about maybe changing their service to their company. And so, and that's also disconcerting for the residents. So, they don't need to talk to those people, obviously, but, but again, we've stressed to National Grid to please let the city know, let the police department know if they're going to be going in any neighborhood, where they're going to be, so that if they get any calls and that we know that they're in the neighborhoods and will be going door-to-door. They, one of the issues that did come up, and I know we heard about it, was sometimes it was in the evening, and in particular, one call I got was having to do with someone knocking on the door close to 8:30 at night, which seemed unusual. And National Grid did say that they do go in evening hours. No, hopefully, you know, they meant early evening, because they get a better response of people home in the evening than they do during the day. So, I know Christine Clancy's here and Chief Richardson, who were at those meetings, if there's anything that I'm missing on it. The second meeting had to do with the moratorium and requesting whether there's any update as to that, and at that point, there was no update. We haven't received one since.
Okay. Yeah, just if we can stress again, if, I know they have subcontractors out there, but they have to have some sort of markings for National Grid. I mean, we're going to emphasize that, but thank you for the report.
And they are supposed to have identifying tags and information that they work for National Grid.
Right. Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Threw you to the madam manager. I'm so grateful for this report, because I too did receive some calls from people concerned about strangers knocking on their door, trying to get in, saying that we're here to read a meter, or there's possibly a leak, and this, that, and the other. In this day and age, you can't be so sure people can get phony IDs, but I know that they carry IDs, they wear them. But the fact is, we want to reassure the public that yes, the National Grid has requested access to people's residence, and they do this. Every three years, they read meters. So, the only thing that I would say to people is, if you haven't got your meter outside, then I would try to get my meter outside. That way, they will read your meter, but they don't have to come into your house or whatever. So, that's what I would suggest. So, thank you for this, and if they're watching, if people are watching, this is a legitimate concern, and people actually had the right to be there with the badges, but it's frightening, and so, that's good. Thank you, madam manager.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Next, we have SBC appointments. Counselor Elliott?
No, thank you for the response. I think, you know, those individuals that are slated to be appointed would make sense. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have FERC, Counselor Kennedy and Counselor Elliott. No.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm a little bit concerned about, it appears that the stage level to lower the crest gate is 50 feet, but they're trying to get it to 58. Have we succeeded in getting it to 58?
So, the law department, I believe, sent a letter. I'll turn it over to the solicitor to give us an update on that.
Sure. The, we sent a letter regarding the installation of a, another gauge for the measurement of the water. However, as far as the 48 versus 58, 50 feet, the 50 feet was part of a negotiated settlement with Anell approved by FERC. And prior to that, and I'm sure you'll recall, there weren't, there was no ability because of the, the board system that they had to control the level of the dam. So, now, under this protocol, it's not seasonal-based, which is the way it worked before, it's condition-based, and when there is a prediction of a water level reaching 50 feet, they will lower the dam. And I believe that's what's been happening, and I think the chief can give us some sort of reports from the field as to how it's been working.
So, they just won't go the 58 feet, will they?
No, I mean, it's something that was negotiated as part of a settlement of the lawsuit, and the city had negotiated this settlement. There was no protocol before the city did this, and really, our only option was to either reach a settlement that would achieve something or continue on with the suit. And one party that did that, in the end, the suit was dismissed. So, I think the result actually was a good one, and as far as I know, I believe it's working well, but the chief, I defer to the chief.
We did speak about this last week, because we had questions and concerns from some residents about the level and whether it was being dealt with at the appropriate time by Anell, and I know Chief Winwood did go out and inspect the areas.
Thank you, madam manager. Yes, Counselor, I do keep in contact with the gentleman at Anell, and last weekend, the weather forecast predicted just under 50 feet. It was supposed to be 49 and a half or a little bit more than that. So, a couple of days before that, Anell did lower the dam all the way for a couple of days, and then they partially raised it, so they had it about 70% down, and they've left it that way for about, for about a week. And the river is currently at 47 feet, and it's predicted to go down to about 46 feet or 46 and a half over the next few days. So, the dam is currently about 70% down, and they have been proactive even when the river levels are below 50 feet.
So, the Bladder Dam isn't completed yet, is it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is completed.
It just got completed recently, about, maybe a month ago.
Oh, all right then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Further discussion? Thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Leahy?
Just threw you to the chief. With the control of the Bladder Dam, I noticed there was like a big tree that was sitting across it. Do they go out and maintain that stuff afterwards?
I believe they do. I know in the past, a couple of times a year, they'd go out and they'd repair the boards and the pins, and at that time, they'd take the trees out of it. I assume they're going to do the same thing.
Yeah, this is the first time. So, now that the new dam is working, some of that debris that comes downriver must interfere with it going up and down, right?
Yeah, I'm going to guess that they're going to clear that out of there, and then in the springtime, they generally bring a crane in and they clean all the debris from over by the School Street Bridge.
Sure.
It all gathers in the corner. And another thing they've been doing this week is there's a gate at the hydroelectric plant, and they've had that down, and that allows millions of gallons of water to flow over, over the gate where the hydroelectric plant is as well, to help keep the river level down a little bit.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set?
Thank you.
Next, we have civil service, Lowell Police Department and Lowell Fire Department hiring. Counselor Noom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report, chief. And I'm very happy that we're going to have the first meeting, informational meeting that's going to be at Lowell Community Health, November 28. And I know that the chief also in the report indicated that the next civil service exam is going to be March 23, 2019. I have already passed it out to some of the LTC people, so that they can, you know, put it out there and get more people to go and involve. And also happy to see that Chief Winwood also looking to do something similar is in his schedule, so, so happy for the report. Thank you, madam manager, Chief Richardson and Chief Winwood for that.
Any further discussion? I need a motion to accept and place in file by Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Mercier. Next, we have a communication, designate Andrew Hosler as chairperson of council of aging. I need a motion to accept and place in file by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Conway. After that, we have appoint Linda M. Kilbride to Paulette Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Motion to adopt by Counselor Malanazzo, second by Counselor Conway. Roll call.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Noom.
Yes.
That's nine years.
Do we have Andrew here? No? We have...
Linda.
Linda? Please.
I'm Linda Kilbride. Thank you very much for the appointment. I appreciate it. I've had a very long history with the Paulette Memorial Library. My mother was a trustee for many years, and from the time that we were going to the bookmobile at the Riley School to book sales here, and so I'm very excited to be part of that group and looking forward to working with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. All right, next, we have a communication point, Bradley Bitumhui to Conservation Commission. Need a motion to accept and place in file.
So moved.
By Counselor Cirillo, second by Counselor Conway. Roll call.
No roll.
No roll. I'm sorry. Is that person here?
Bradley?
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager and council, for the opportunity to serve for this great city. I'm Bradley Butunhays. I've been a resident of UMass, of the City of Lowell for nine years by way of UMass Lowell's College of Engineering. I currently work as a construction manager for Crosspoint Associates in Waltham, and I'm going to be serving on the Conservation Commission. I look forward to using practical construction experience to find cost-effective methods to make sure that our resources are protected under construction and development. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your...
Wants a picture.
It's not for me.
You're offered all kinds of services here, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a city manager requests out of state travel, but I need a motion to suspend the rules because to add two members of the Lowell Police Department. By Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Elliott. Any motion to adopt by Counselor Malanazzo, second by Counselor Conway. Roll call.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Noom.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
That's nine years.
Do we have Andrew here? No? We have...
Linda.
Linda? Please.
I'm Linda Kilbride. Thank you very much for the appointment. I appreciate it. I've had a very long history with the Paulette Memorial Library. My mother was a trustee for many years, and from the time that we were going to the bookmobile at the Riley School to book sales here, and so I'm very excited to be part of that group and looking forward to working with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. All right, next, we have a communication point, Bradley Bitumhui to Conservation Commission. Need a motion to accept and place in file.
So moved.
By Counselor Cirillo, second by Counselor Conway. Roll call.
No roll.
No roll. I'm sorry. Is that person here?
Bradley?
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager and council, for the opportunity to serve for this great city. I'm Bradley Butunhays. I've been a resident of UMass, of the City of Lowell for nine years by way of UMass Lowell's College of Engineering. I currently work as a construction manager for Crosspoint Associates in Waltham, and I'm going to be serving on the Conservation Commission. I look forward to using practical construction experience to find cost-effective methods to make sure that our resources are protected under construction and development. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your...
Wants a picture.
It's not for me.
You're offered all kinds of services here, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a city manager requests out of state travel, but I need a motion to suspend the rules because to add two members of the Lowell Police Department. By Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Elliott. Any motion to adopt? By Counselor Malanazzo, second by Counselor Conway. Roll call.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Noom.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine years.
Thank you. Next, votes from the city manager. Vote to adopt the minimum residential factor to fiscal year 2019. I need a motion to refer to public hearing on December 4, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Pushed by Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Conway. Next, we have vote to authorize the city manager execute limited access agreement to Perkins Eastman relative to 75 Akken Drive. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager execute a limited access agreement from the City of Lowell to Perkins Eastman relative to 75 Akken Drive, also known as the new Lowell High School site. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Counselor Conway, I'm, sorry, Counselor Cirillo, second by Counselor Kennedy. Roll call.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Present.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Present.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Noom.
Yes.
Seven years. I mean, Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Seven years.
Okay. All right. Next, we have vote to authorize the city manager execute limited access agreement to Skanska, USA relative to 75 Akken Drive. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager execute a limited access agreement from the City of Lowell to Skanska, USA relative to 75 Akken Drive, also known as the new Lowell High School site. Need a motion to adopt? By Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Kennedy. Roll call.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Present.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Present.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Noom.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Seven years.
Okay. Next, we have vote authorize the manager execute a license agreement for 11317 Middlesex Street at Foster Street, Luke's Roast Beef LLC overhang awning. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Authorize the city manager enter into a license agreement with Luke's Roast Beef LLC to encroach upon the City of Lowell property along the side of the building at 1317 Middlesex Street at Foster Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I need a motion to adopt? By Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Conway. Roll call.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Noom.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine years.
Next, we have orders from the city manager, order 60-day trial. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinance, the City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning section 266-6, therefore titled Temporary Experimental Regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period of 60 days. I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Counselor Cirillo, second by Counselor Conway.
Question?
Yes.
Through you, is the traffic engineer here?
Craig Thomas is here to answer.
Sure. Oh, Craig. The stop sign at Maryland Ave, Maryland Drive, what's that, just at the top of the hill?
Yep, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Most people stopped that. I didn't know why that, did someone request that, or?
Yeah, and again, our apologies. The transportation engineer is sick this evening, so couldn't be here. The residents did request it under Massachusetts state law. At a T intersection, you are required to stop, but the feeling was in this location, to add a stop sign would help to emphasize that point, because apparently some folks do drive through without fully stopping. There's a concern about safety.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, all set?
Yep.
Thanks. Roll call.
Counselor Cirillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Malanazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Noom.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine years.
Next, we have loan order wastewater treatment, bond $450,000. I need a motion to refer to public hearing on December 4, 2018, at 7:00 PM. By Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Conway.
Still here?
Yes.
Could we also refer this, I mean, not to delay by any stretch, but to refer this to the finance subcommittee? I would like to get a status report on another $40 million loan order back in 2013. Just, it would be helpful, I think, for the new members to get me to get an update as to where we are with our debt, not only for the enterprise fund, but throughout the rest of the city. Thank you.
We might have to change the meeting date for the hearing.
Public hearing, there's not a meeting next week, so maybe if we put the scheduled as public hearing for the eighteenth of the Saturday, I don't know if the financial...
I don't want to delay this, I just think it'd be helpful to have a meeting before
Mark Young is here, he maybe can address whether that's, whether the time is...
We can always meet...
The public hearing was the eighteenth instead of the fourth of December.
That would be fine, the eighteenth would be fine.
I just think, I, look, I understand that we have to do this, I just wanted to refer this and other debt issues to the Finance Subcommittee, so whatever this was scheduled for, that's fine, we can accommodate a Subcommittee hearing.
Okay, so we'll leave it at the fourth? Okay.
We'll keep it on the fourth, okay.
We'll keep it on the fourth. You all set?
But we can, we can get the report for the Subcommittee, absolutely.
All set, Councilor Elliott? Okay, thank you. Next, ordinance amend Chapter 56 entitled personnel by amending various sections.
You refer it to a public hearing.
Yeah, I know. All right.
December fourth.
We're going to refer this to a public hearing for December fourth, also.
So moved.
By Councilor Kennedy, second by Councilor Sirillo. All right, we have a Public Safety Subcommittee meeting tonight, November twentieth, 2018. Do we have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the Subcommittee meeting tonight at 5:30. Attend the meeting with Councilor Leahy, Councilor Malanazo. The discussion was around the issue of Restorative Justice Program. Judge J. Blitzman was here, DA Marion Ryan was here. Joining us also, Councilor Rita Mercia, Councilor Conway, Councilor Sirillo, Madam City Managers, Don Hughes, and Assistant City Manager Kara Keefe. Chief Richardson also was joining us as well, as well as two Assistant ADA, ADA Mina and Bolizaro also join us. Judge Blitzman start by, you know, talk about the court. He said ten years ago, it start, he start to host a monthly school court meeting that involve a lot of partner, a lot of player, DA office, attorney, probation, law enforcement school. So at some point through the trial court grant, they start the court basis model of the Restorative Justice Program. That was in 2012. Altogether was seventy-nine case, two still open, and the rest was, the one that resolved was successful. To, to, to address the due process concern, they actually had a memorandum of agreement that mean that required the offenders to take responsibility for their action, listen to the victim, or heal the harm that they've done to the victim, and take active and concrete step to make amend to the victim and the community. That is the, the court-based model of the Restorative Justice Program. That program evolved. Not too long ago, it start a school-based model of Restorative Justice Program, start at Butler School. According to the judges, that it costs little or no at all, nothing at all to the city and/or to the school. Basically, he said, cheaper to educate, you know, than to incarcerate. He's right. So basically, this program, they got a grant to train, to have a trainer come in, train teachers how to really address issues in the school. So a counselor, I mean, DA Ryan just also indicated that not very recently, the, the, our legislative, state representative actually passed Restorative Justice Act in 2018, I believe. And then, you know, the, I think, as a council, with that, as a council, the Subcommittee actually asked the mayor, really, to, through the mayor to the school, to explore possibility of expanding this school-based model, because it seems successful, it seemed like it doesn't cost as much money at all, if anything, so I, the motion was filed. Councilor Malanazo actually filed the motion, and second by Councilor Leahy, to ask you, Mr. Mayor, to bring this to the School Committee and to ask them to explore possibility of expanding the program. I invite my Counselor, Counselor Malanazo, and Counselor Leahy, and also Counselor Conway, and Counselor Mercia, and Sirillo to add, if they want to, anything I missed there. I think Counselor Conway was just about to say something there. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I think that it certainly was a very informative meeting, and as, as you, Mr. Mayor, and myself worked over the high school for a number of years, I think that there was always a frustration, I think, with not only staff, but with parents and students, on how to discipline, discipline individuals. And I think especially, there was, we were getting into an area that was extremely complicated, and that was the cyberbullying. And I think that a program like this, Restorative Justice Program, I think what it does do is it certainly shows the harm that, that an individual can do, and how to, and how to handle that, and realize that, you know, that it, it's another tool that we can use, because what we've been doing right now is not as effective as it should be. So, again, I thought it was a great meeting, and I, I thank the chairman for doing a great job with that. Thank you.
If I may want to add, oh, sorry, I just want to add that there's a fact about this, they pass out, all the council has them, so just want to add that.
Thank you. Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe that the chairman, Noon, did a tremendous job explaining it. I can't really add to that. I just want to reiterate the fact that the motion is to ask you, as the mayor, to bring it forward to the School Committee, and ask if this program could be implemented in more schools, because it's only in the Butler School, and it should be in more schools. And I think, because they're getting an advantage to hear this, but the other schools are not. So that was a great motion, and a good Subcommittee meeting.
It was, it was a good meeting, I observed it in the other room. Councilor Kennedy?
So, should we have a motion from the council that endorses the recommendation of the Subcommittee? I'll make that motion there.
And I'll second it.
Second motion by Councilor Kennedy, second by Councilor Mercia. You all set? Thank you. Any further discussion on that matter? Okay, I need a motion to accept as a report of progress.
So moved.
By Councilor Sirillo, second by Councilor Kennedy. Thank you. Next, we have claim for property damage. I need a motion to refer the Law Department for report and recommendation. By Councilor Malanazo, second by Councilor Conway. Next, we have motions. First motion by Councilor Conway. Request city manager provide a report regarding signage and accessibility at polling locations throughout the city for people with disabilities. Need a second? By Councilor Leahy. Councilor Conway? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fortunate enough to be a member of the, on the Council of Disabilities, and I know that during our discussions in the last election, there were some concerns. And I think that, I think that this motion here will kind of clear things up to make sure that in all the polling areas, that there's the appropriate signage, and also areas and the materials that are needed in order to, in order to help our citizens with disability. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Any further discussion? Next, we have a motion by Councilor Noon. Request mayor introduce a motion before the School Committee requesting Lowell High School Social Studies Department write a more fitting testimonial to display with the portrait of Benjamin Butler in Lowell City Hall. We have a resistance speaker. I need a second?
Second.
By Councilor Sirillo. We have a resistance speaker.
Joseph Boyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. If you climb the staircase in Lowell City Hall, I don't know how often everybody gets up there, it's way up, you'll find a portrait of Lowell statesman and Civil War General Benjamin Butler, along with a brief description of his significance. That description is pretty much what you'd find if you looked up Butler in a popular Civil War encyclopedia or website. Maybe ours is a little nicer. But that's just the problem. The sketch of Butler that has come down to us is like most Civil War history, it's distorted by decades of control of the historical narrative, by people sympathized with the Confederacy, the lost cause whitewashing of the history of the Civil War, and emancipation, and slavery, and Reconstruction. And they don't give Ben Butler his due, and they don't give him his due in a particular way that is important, and there's something going on about it right now. Now, this isn't the fault of the person who wrote that particular inscription to include with Butler's portrait. That's what's in the books, that's what, if you looked, if you looked it up, if you had the job to, to write one of those, that's what you'd look up. But that's exactly the problem. That's what our history of the Civil War is like. Now, fortunately, we find ourselves in the right time and in just the right place to do something about that. This motion grew out of a conversation I had with Bob Delasa, the head of the LHS Social Studies Department at the 200th anniversary celebration of Ben Butler's birth. It's meant to be the beginning of a larger effort to rescue Ben Butler's good name, and to advance a project within the history field to better remember the history of emancipation and civil rights during the Civil War and Reconstruction periods. The goal of this motion tonight is for Lowell to be part of a larger movement that is going on across the country. Our city and Lowell High School as an institution can play a meaningful role in an important intellectual and academic movement that's happening now, and I'm excited by the possibility. Let me explain a little more about what's going on and why this is important now. Ben Butler was the general who issued the contraband order, which set off the mass defection of the Confederacy's enslaved people across the lines to join Union forces. In doing so, he dealt a crushing blow to the Confederate war economy, provided tens of thousands of desperately needed troops to the Union Army, as well as a massive trove of intelligence. It was a huge advance to the Union's war effort, but it isn't included in the description in Lowell City Hall. Ben Butler was the first Union general to order that a black man be armed for a military operation. This is meaningful history. He became one of the foremost advocates of African-American troops, and when the Army refused to properly decorate them for the valor of their service, he put up his own money to coin the Silver Butler medals. His actions advanced the Union war effort in more than just a handful of generals in, in the Union Army, but his actions at Fortress Monroe aren't included in our description. Ben Butler was, founded the Hampton School in the area he controlled in, in Virginia, to help educate the people who had escaped across the lines to freedom. Eventually, it became the Hampton Institute, and now it's Hampton University, which is one of the famous historically black colleges and universities in America. That isn't included on the description on, in Lowell City Hall. When he was in Congress, Butler was a strong supporter of a strong federal Reconstruction effort to defend newly freed black citizens from Klan terror, and to defend their civil rights. But that isn't included in the description of him in Lowell City Hall. Now, you can include everything in a description, right? It's, it's very brief. However, what is included in the description is the fact that the rich slave owners of New Orleans didn't like him. What is included in the description is an insulting nickname that they gave to him. Now, so there's, what's being included, what's being excluded draws the picture that's, that we are saying about him. And this is here in Lowell City Hall. Now, right there is...
Can you come to closure?
Okay, okay, I'll come to closure. This, all right. This motion was written to provide as much flexibility as possible to the School Department, to Lowell High School, and to, to the Social Studies Department, in terms of the product and in terms of the process. They could produce a new document on their own, they can incorporate the project into their teaching as they see fit.
I need you to...
Perhaps there can be a class project, but that's for the Social Studies faculty to decide. What I'm asking for tonight from this body is that you get the ball rolling in this larger effort in a very public manner to advance an important public conversation. Thank you.
I think many of us are aware that Ben Butler was a civil rights advocate, there's no question about that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Noon, do you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I know that not too long ago, the Lowell High School Social Study Department actually celebrate the twenty year, 200 years of his birth. I learned that he's a resident of Lowell, I didn't know anything about it. I saw the statue, I mean, the portrait upstairs. I didn't know that he was the governor of Massachusetts. I didn't know a lot of things, so I know that if I don't know a lot of things, a lot of kids don't know a lot of things, especially the high school. I thought that the time is right to, you know, take a suitable reassessment of his legacy, you know, his place in Lowell, and maybe in the country. The right people to do that, since they just did the celebration a couple weeks ago, I would say Lowell High School Social Study Department, you know, through you, to the School Department, to maybe look to see, you know, they'd be the fine person to do that job, though, to relook, to reassess on this, and so that's all I'm asking. I, I don't know much, and I just say, hey, you know, it's the right things to do.
No, I mean, we all have to learn, but many people are aware that Ben Butler was a great civil rights leader also, but the thing is, I would add at some point, we should have a further discussion. Lowell City councils of the past and School Committee of the past led in this state, and actually in this country, in civil rights legislation, right within our own city. So we have our, our own history to be proud of, and maybe that's something that further can be discussed, but these are good points that you bring up. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Kennedy?
I have no objection to the motion, I just would like it to be that if there's no objection by the maker of the motion, that whatever the end product is, comes back to the city council for, for a vote.
That's fine.
Fine. Thank you. Next, by Councilor Noon. Request city manager have the Department of Public Works provide an update regarding upgrading the city streets' lights to LED. I need a second by Councilor Sirillo. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that the project have start already, citywide updated of street light to LED. I think it's a great project. It will make our streets safer for pedestrian and driver, improve the quality of light, but also it's the most important part as well, is that we don't know this, but certainly it's going to help us achieve our goal in reducing carbon, changing from that to carbon, really, a change of that to LED is going to help in that area. So I think, you know, I just want to see that we, we as at, and, and, you know, we, take a progressive step into, to, to make sure that it get done soon.
Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're on streetlights, and I know that it's being addressed, but I just want to reiterate the fact that I did have a gentleman call me in concern about the eight streetlights that are out in the Gallagher Square, Gorham, Thondike Street area. Very dark, and the people are concerned about it, especially this one particular gentleman. And I asked him if he would just get the numbers off the polls for me, and he did better than that. He actually did a diagram, he came to my home, and he had it all like an engineer. I was very impressed by it, I passed it in. I heard from Kara today, there's a discrepancy with the national grid and the City of Lowell. If we could kind of put pressure on that and, and try to get to the bottom of what's stopping that from happening, I know they were widening the area in that neighborhood, I just wanted to know if we could be on top of it and, and vigilant.
Yeah, we will, we will get you an update on that. It is an area that's important to have lit, and I think there was some thought that it was because of the construction going on, but it's not, it was another matter entirely between national grid and, and the city. So we will, we are pushing on that as well to solve that.
Thank you so much, thank you.
No, thank you, that was a good motion, and, Madam Manager, I, I think Market Street also is still a concern with the neighborhood group, the downtown neighborhood group, you know, that area back of the canal also, but Market Street in general.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay. Any further discussion, Ms. Meta? Next, we have announcements. Just a reminder to everybody for us, the Mayor's Holiday Festival for Homeless Youth this Tuesday, the 27th, at the Zerba Room on Market Street, and we have sixteen bands, and it's going to be, I think it's going to be quite a night. Look forward to having members of the City Council there, School Committee, and members of the public there. Councilor Kennedy, then Councilor Elliott?
If I could just add to that, Mr. Mayor, the, it's probably worth mentioning that admission for that evening is $20. That last year, it sold out, was a very, it was just a great event, and hopefully it'll be that way. I know we have a different mayor this year, but hopefully it'll be just as good or better than it was last year.
We're trying, no, you did a great job last year, and it's true, I mean, it was standing room only, and people really did enjoy the music. I still say, I mean, I'm looking at the names, I still don't understand it, but I enjoyed it. Any other comments, any other announcements? Councilor Elliott?
It's not an announcement, I wanted to, if there aren't any announcements, I wanted to ask for suspension of the rules to bring in an issue.
Any further announcements? Councilor Malanazo?
Thank you. In light of the fact that the City Hall Holiday Open House is Tuesday, December 11th, I've been in discussions with the city clerk, and we're moving the zoning Subcommittee from the 11th to the 18th, and we're going to actually have it at 5:00 PM instead of 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mercia, oh, sorry, Madam Manager?
Just quickly, I just wanted to let everybody at home know that the city, the annual City of Lights Parade will take place this Saturday. It will kick off down by Jackson Street at 4:30, expected to be downtown at City Hall by 5:00 o'clock or thereabouts, and the lighting of City Hall, so just to let everybody know. November 24th.
Councilor Mercia?
I'm all right, thank you.
Councilor Noon?
Well, I just want to wish everyone here and who tune in, happy Thanksgiving. Eat a lot, drink, but drive safe.
Good, good advice. Councilor Elliott, you have a motion too?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm motion to suspend rules and bring in an issue. We don't meet for a couple...
Need a second? First, Councilor Mercia?
And before, and once a second, the, it's relative to a bicycle race that took place at Shed Park this past Sunday.
Okay, we, we, we have a second.
So I know we don't meet for a couple of weeks, so I wanted to have the, ask the manager to, to look into this. This is the second year that there's been the race, and I don't oppose the race, or, you know, it's, it's a good thing, it brings people into the city. But this past Sunday, after eight or nine hours of what is essentially a mountain race sponsored by an outside organization, the track that's used by Lowell High School and the middle school runners, you know, is, is destroyed. It's in bad shape. The organization paid $200 for a permit, and, you know, as a result of the nine inches of snow we got, and then melting, someone sent me numerous pictures. I don't know what it's going to cost the city to do it, but unfortunately, that, that organization or somebody has, has got to be paid, is going to be made to pay for it. So I don't know if you're aware of this, Madam Manager?
Yeah, we received many, many complaints and have looked at the pictures, we've been We've been in conversations with the DPW Commissioner and as far as what steps. Apparently, they, once again, were given a, a permit by the Board of Parks, but the conditions based on what had happened with the weather really rendered the field, you know, inappropriate for, for what the activity was. So we, we are aware of it and we, and I know I spoke with Counselor Conway about this and, and others that raised this issue, but we are actively talking to, you know, the, our departments to see what can be done, both short term and long term.
I mean, I, I understand, I mean, it's, you know, it's a beautiful park and it should be used, but some common sense has got to be applied. You know, they, they apply for this, they get the permit in June, the June Board of Parks meeting. Maybe the event has to be changed to when it's dry because this, it can't continue and I just don't want the city to have to go out and repair that track. It's used not, not only by the high school, but by the neighborhood, by the people in the city. So again, you know, permits are issued, I can just say for the soccer organization, when it's pouring rain or it's inclement weather and there's grass and you're going to ruin it, then you just can't. And it's just common sense and this is, you know, they went on for eight, nine hours and, and it's, and it's really unfortunate. So I appreciate you being on top of it and, you know, have to make sure this, this doesn't happen again because it should be a good thing, but in this case, it turned out horribly wrong.
Thank you. Counsel Conway, then Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talked to the city manager earlier this morning and at ten, ten o'clock this morning, I, I put a motion on for the next time we have a meeting to get a report and also the motion asked for the, the estimate of the cost. And, and again, I have seen a number of pictures. I had coaches call me on it. It really made absolutely no sense at all as Counsel Elliot just mentioned, the fact that, you know, whoever was running the, that race certainly should have stopped it. And to be quite frank with you, the participants should have realized that, you know, they, they would dig up this, this place and I think it's just not, it's not fair. I also did a little bit of research on it and I found out that this race actually took place at Middlesex Community College in Bedford a number of years ago, which I'll go into more detail with my motion. But it's my understanding that that motion, that race only lasted either, I think it was one or two years, for obvious reasons. They realized that Middlesex Community College, it really took a beating on that campus and they did not want that to happen. And as far as I'm concerned, I went out there today, I took a look at it, it's difficult to see through some of the snow. I cannot believe the condition of that, of that park and it was just totally irresponsible. So again, with next time we meet, I will bring a formal, I have the formal motion that's already been put in today. Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it happens, I was at Shed Park last Saturday afternoon for a different event, but while I was there, I did see people preparing the track for, for that race. And as it happens, maybe a couple of days before that, I mentioned to somebody that I would be at Shed Park on Saturday and they indicated that they were, they were going to be in that race. And I mentioned that last year when they had the race, that the, the place was torn up. And they responded that they paid to have it all squared away. And I do know that the park looked fine in the spring. So I don't know if that's true or not, but it certainly, that should be part of the report, Madam Manager, I would think, is that I'm not so concerned as long as they paid to replace everything that they did. And I realize it was extraordinary weather, you know, you had the snow and the mud and the rain and everything else that went along with it, but it would be good to know whether, whether in fact they did pay to fix, fix it up last year rather than to have the city and whether or not they are committed to doing it now. And also maybe whatever happens with them for events like this, maybe it's good to have, have them have to carry a bond so that, so that we don't, so that we're not left holding, holding the bag. The person that was participating in the race is a employee of Lowell Sun, which I thought, well, if an employee from Lowell Sun is telling me that they, they paid to restore it last year, then it must be true. But it would still be good to hear that from you and to hear that in the report.
We, we will get the full report. That is our understanding that they, they, this group did pay last year. They have expressed a commitment to pay this year, but we will get a full report, not only as to what that's going to cost, the conditions, but what the expectation is as far as how, how this will be handled. We will have that for you.
You all set? Counsel Conway?
Just one other quick thing. I think, I think that it's going to end up taking, I mean, we, we have seen the, the snow and who knows how much snow we're going to be getting this year. So it's going to be very difficult to take a look and give a, a true estimate. So we're obviously talking about going into, into April. I think that what, what I have seen is an absolute incredible mess that's going to take a little bit more than a little contribution to fix that up. And, and again, I think that, you know, we, as residents of the city of Lowell, we should not have to bear those expenses. Thank you.
All set? Any further discussion? Need a motion to adjourn? By Counsel Malanazo, seconded by Counsel Kennedy. Thank you.